Uh, do you want to do a Steve? Do you want to do a roll call?
Sure, Mr. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Langgallis.
If you said me, President Tammy here.
Yes, Ms. Lankowski.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Schulman, here. Mr. Bryce.
Here.
Mr. Bachneck.
Here.
And Ms. Wells.
Here.
I don't see JJ, right? She's not on.
No, JJ, no Richard. So she'll be able to see everybody, Galen.
Are they expected today? Did they say they were coming?
Richard said no. I didn't hear back from JJ. But either way, I think we still have Diana and Anna set on everything.
Okay. All right. So we can see Diana and Anna as it's currently configured, right? Okay. Okay, consider yourself seated for these matters. Uh, the first matter is twenty twenty-five seventy-three S.A., City of Norwalk. This is a special appropriation request from the Norwalk Fire Department for additional funding for the floor replacement project at station number one at Ninety and Canaan Avenue. Uh, is somebody here representing the fire department?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good. Please proceed.
Okay, good evening, committee members. Mark Conti, Assistant Chief in the Fire Department. We, uh, we recently received funding to replace the floor, the apparatus floor at Station One. Um, that this is the Broad River Station, Ninety and Canaan Avenue, and it was built in nineteen sixty-one. All original building. The floor has been moving for many years and, um, we, we had the building department inspect it and they wanted it replaced immediately. So we opened that up. Um, we got, you know, funding for that and as, oh, after we opened it up, uh, there was quite a bit of electrical and there was quite a bit of extra, uh, damage in that building. Um, and we obviously had to address it as we were opening up. There was a lot of electrical in the floor. Uh, we had to search and find where it was and, and abandoned it. And we've actually put everything up above now, so we'll never have this problem again. Um, the floor thankfully, we did replace it because it was cracked basically in half throughout the whole floor. But, um, essentially during the project, we've encountered many things that needed to happen, like ins- in insulating the roof. We had to, um, we had, we had a problem with the landscape in the back. There was a deck that was literally falling apart. We were going to try to work around it. We had to replace that. Um, there was damage to the sliding door in there too, and just replacing the whole floor. So now everything is being done properly and we, we requested, um, ninety thousand extra just for those unforeseen issues that occurred. Now I'll take any questions.
Does anybody have questions?
Yes.
This is my fire station, so I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I started to speak. I, I spoke over you. I apologize.
That's okay. Um, hi, good evening, Mr. Conti. I, you know, think it's great that you guys are getting some upgrades. I'm just curious how, um, spray foam insulation or insulation that's in the ceiling and repainting the whole place came into play when it's the floor that you're replacing? Just if you could shed some light on that.
So yeah, what, what happened was we have to also replace the garage doors. The garage doors were in the ceiling. The ceiling tiles were actually all falling apart, so that had to come out so we could access all the, so we can access the, um, the actual, the garage doors. And then with the electrical issues that occurred, we had to open up the ceiling to access the electrical issues as well and put them up above. And, and that's why we took them out of the floor and put everything above. So while we put everything above, there was a lot of holes and there's a lot of, um, repair work that had to done, to be done to the walls. So we figured while we were doing all of this, let's just get this done all at once and clean it up and it's done. It's, and there was, there was also a major plumbing issue that they, there was a two-inch copper line found underneath the floor that ran all the way to the other side. And we did not want to have to cap that and leave that in the ground. So we had to, we had to open up a wall and actually find where it was coming down to the ground, cap that off. And then we, we ran the hose bib for the trucks to, uh, uh, in the ceiling and around the, and around, uh, the, down to the floor again. So really what ended up happening is we had to open up everything just to access it.
Okay.
And we found there was actually, yeah, we found there's almost no insulation in that ceiling tile is left anyway.
Okay. And what happens to the, um, trucks and the firefighters that are there while the work is being done?
So what we did, we actually, um, we have two, we have a, an engine company and a ladder company there. We have three bays in that building. Uh, the third actually was, we were unable to occupy due to the floor being so damaged at the time. So, um, that, we're going to actually be able to put a third, uh, reserve truck there. But what we did is we, we moved one of the ladder trucks to our Fairfield Avenue facility, uh, for the time being. And our engine company is working out of that building still. So we remain, so we kept coverage in that building. And actually, because originally we were going to keep both and that would have been a four-phase project. So this changed it to a two-phase project that actually saved us thirty-two thousand in the beginning just to change the phases. So we, we started with some credits. And then when we opened up the floor, we found a lot, there was no insulation underneath the floor, things like that, that you could never, you wouldn't know um, until you, you, you happen, until, you know, you open up the floor. But that, that's what we did. So they're, they're still working out of there in, in the firehouse there that, they're actually almost done. They, they're, they are in their final phases right now. We're, we're, we're moving along. So things are going very well. It's just, we needed the, this extra money to, to finish the project properly.
Thank you.
Questions? If that will move forward to Mr. Schulman's motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion. I assume that was a motion to approve, Lou.
Yeah. Okay, there's a motion to approve made and seconded. Uh, do you want to do a roll call vote, uh, Steve?
Sure, uh, we'll start with Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis.
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Schulman.
Yes.
Mr. Bryce.
Yes.
Mr. Bachneck.
Yes.
And Ms. Wells.
Yeah.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for making your own prayers.
Thank you.
Uh, our next matter is twenty twenty-five seventy-two dash eight dash twenty-four. Referral C S P R, City of Norwalk, Veterans Park Marina Dock Replacement. Is anybody here for the city of Norwalk?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Um, my name is Ken Hughes. I'm the Superintendent of Parks and Public Property for the city. And I could speak on this matter this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. So the, um, the City of Norwalk, uh, Department of Recreation and Parks, along with the Department of Public Works, is, uh, is starting a, a very exciting project, a product that we've been working a very long time on. And this is a replacement of the existing city marina, which is on the east side of Veterans Park. Uh, if you recall, a few years ago, we did a lot of work on the lawn tramps where we replaced the existing lawn tramps as well as the transient docks on the west side of the park. So now we moved over to the east side of the park to replace, um, to replace the city marina. Uh, we have been patching, patching the marina for many years, uh, you know, replacing boards as needed. So it's time has come and we were lucky to receive a eighty percent matching ship grant, uh, which is going to pay for a, a bulk of this project. So the, the project entails replacing the existing marina and the same exact footprint. Uh, we weren't allowed to go beyond the footprint due to the, the channel, you know, the, the federal channel. Um, we are including ADA access. Uh, there is existing water and power at the marina. So that's going to be all upgraded to new, uh, to new utilities. Um, we're going to do new parking. Uh, so it's going to be a, a one hundred percent updated city marina. Uh, the boaters are very excited about this. They've been, they've been looking forward to this for a few years now. And we are finally, uh, you know, getting ready to start. So we're looking, you know, for this commission for the eight twenty-four review and subsequent referral.
Does anybody have any questions?
Quick question, uh, are you going to also be, uh, selling fuel at that site?
We are not. No.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Hughes.
Hi.
Nice to see you. What about, how does this tie in or conflict with any of the Walkbridge activity rebuilding?
It, it's not going, not at all. Not at all. All, all the staging for this project is on, is going to be on, on our site within Veterans Park. Um, you know, we already worked with the contractor on where materials are going to be stored, uh, equipment. So i- it's tight within our, with our own park, so it's not going to affect, uh, Walkbridge use at all.
Thank you.
Do you have any drawings you can show us? Talk us through these things you're saying, where things are going to be stored, how it's going to be done?
Um, I didn't, I didn't bring any actual, actual drawings. Um, are you familiar with that park at all?
Not, um, not the marina part of it, no.
Okay, so there's actually, we actually have the existing city marina.
Hold on one second, Ken, sorry. Brian, can you pull up an aerial maybe and, and then Ken can just kind of talk to it? Sorry, they put you on the spot.
That's okay.
I think there were also submitted plans with drawings that might be useful to pull up as well. That's what you further on the spot, Brian, but.
Yeah, I can, we'll start with the site plans and then if that's not helpful, we can move over to the aerial.
I, I'm just aware that, you know, the public's watching and people watch the recordings and it's sort of weird to vote and discuss things that aren't like visible while we're doing it.
I think especially since I, i- if I understand right, this is also a coastal site plan review in addition to need twenty-four, uh, referral. So I think it's good to look at the site plan. Yeah.
Perfect. So that's actually good because it shows the existence. The top photo is the, is the existing. And the bottom photo is the proposed. So if you look, if you look, I, I'm just going to call it north for, for ease of reference. If you look to the north of the existing marina, you can see there are small parking areas that are separated by islands. Those are going to be the staging areas for the contractors. So they're not going to be within the main driveway of the park. And that's all going to be fenced off during construction. And all the boaters have already been notified of the pending construction. So they're aware and their boats are off the docks. So to the right of the photo is that Seaview Avenue, all the way to the right, just to give you a little bit of suberrance.
And can you assure us that they'll follow the noise ordinance?
Absolutely. We already had a pre-con meeting. We're going to be able to accommodate a little bit of a larger, uh, vessel with the newer docks that currently were eighteen feet. And we're going to be able to go up to twenty-four feet, I think with four of the slips. And that was a big request from residents in the past.
Will any dredging be needed to do this project?
No.
And didn't, um, wasn't the parking lot recently repaved not too long ago?
Um, not the section in front of the marina.
Okay.
See, if you, if you look at, if you look at the, uh, the diagram, it's kind of, uh, it's kind of cordoned off from the rest of the parking lot with those tiny islands. So that was never, that was never done.
Okay.
We actually have a couple sinkholes that this project's going to fix.
Thank you.
Will this only be for, um, powered boats?
Yes, if you actually look all the way to the right of the bottom picture, we do have four spaces for jet skis.
Hmm.
And that's something new. We don't have that currently.
Okay, so this would not be, this would not be a kayak launch. You'd still launch your kayaks from the beach.
Correct, correct. This, this will not be a kayak launch.
Something I don't see on this plan, but would, would like to see as a, uh, condition of this approval is, uh, where uh, like a silt fence or other drainage, um, or protections while, while construction is going on are, are in place. Um, so like see that share with staff to ensure that those are installed during construction.
Sure.
Uh, do you have a sense of timeline for when this project would start and when it would be complete?
Yeah, so, so we would like to start it, you know, we'd like to coincide the, uh, the project with the bonus season to not interfere with the bonus season. So we would like to start as soon as, as soon as we can to have completion before the summer bonus season. Trying not to, you know, cause too much disruption to, to our boaters. Because some of them, some of them depend on this to you, to use their boat, so. Sure.
Any further questions?
And we could send along the, um, the sed- sedentation erosion control two for you.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Uh, again, Steve, can you do the roll call?
Sure.
I don't know if we have a resolution for this, but just wanted to earmark that, that one condition of having them put the silt fence erosion controls. Thanks.
Yeah, glad that.
Well, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Williams? That's a yes. Thank you. Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Bachneck?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Also unanimous.
Yeah, thank you everyone for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next matter is twenty twenty-five dash sixty-seven. Uh, C S P R, Michael Gernari.
Yes.
How will we have a new? Instruction of a detached accessory dwelling. Is somebody here representing Mr. Gernari? Am I saying, I'm sorry if I'm saying.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Wonderful. Can you describe for us what you're?
Certainly. So, yeah, so.
Bad timing with the freeze.
I know, that was perfect. I think I'm going to freeze now for like an hour.
I was wondering if it was me, because sometimes mine freezes up, so I was like, oh.
Oh, there you are.
There we, there we go. Okay. So we, we, we have a, a, an existing single family eighteen ninety-five, uh, Queen Anne, uh, on the site. And there's also a, uh, single story detached, uh, garage, uh, from, from many generations ago on the site. Um, we're proposing to, uh, to demolish the existing, uh, single story garage, which is also non-conforming um, with the secondary frontage, uh, setback. Um, uh, build in kind, uh, upon that, that same footprint. Uh, and then also add a two-car garage, uh, grade level and a A D U on the second level.
A D U is over the new garage?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
And we, we received a, I, I inspected the existing, um, the existing, uh, detached garage, uh, found the, uh, the existing foundation to be, you know, severely deteriorated, um. And additionally, it only goes down about eighteen inches below grade. So, uh, we received a unsafe structure letter from, uh, from Bill Ireland. Uh, so we could, we could demolish that and, and rebuild, uh, the same location.
So is the garage three bays?
The, the new gar- garage would be three bays. So that, so if you look at, at elevation number two, the, on the left, that's the existing, well, where the existing garage currently stands. So that would be what we're rebuilding. And then the, everything to the right and above is all new construction.
Awesome.
All details would match the existing, you know, eighteen ninety-five Queen Anne. Um, and as you can see there, we're, we're, uh, you know, we've met, you know, building height, uh, dormer, uh, requirements. So there you could see the, you could see the, uh, that's the secondary frontage setback that I'm showing there crossing over the, uh, that one bay garage. Um, so all that's existing non-conforming beyond there and everything beyond that is, uh, uh, of course conforming to the, to that, that setback.
One bedroom. One bedroom A D U up above.
That's right. One bedroom, uh, kitchenette, bathroom, uh, home office and a, and a half bath.
Looks awesome.
Just a half bath?
No, a, a full bath for the, so the, the, the property owner plans to use the office and the half bath for himself and then have a secondary, uh, entrance for the, the A D U, which would contain, yeah, a combination, living room, sleeping area, kitchenette and, uh, and a bath, full bath.
I see.
Would the one car sort of separate area be for the parking use of the tenant of the studio?
Uh, possibly.
And this is a question for staff. Um, in the A D U regulations, there has to be one parking space, but it doesn't have to be enclosed. Is that correct?
Correct. Just one additional spot in a compliant location.
Okay, if it's in the driveway, would it be compliant here?
So not, not in this, not how they proposed it, but they proposed a, a total of three, three parking spaces be, well, two beyond the front setback, one is existing, pre-existing non-conforming, so a total of, of three, which would meet our requirement.
And do we have a sketch of the driveway, how it meets the garage? Because I know this has a front and a rear.
We do.
Access. Oh, so they would, you would come in from the back?
That, that's right.
Okay.
From seaside place.
Yep. Okay, sorry, I had forgotten that detail. Thank you. And were the neighbors, did the neighbors need to be notified on this?
They were notified.
Thank you.
A question for either Brian or Steve. Uh, does this meet, uh, all of our requirements?
Yeah. Uh, the only thing different about this is, as Mr. Gernari explained, is the, uh, pre-existing non-conforming and, and rebuilding on the existing footprint with the unsafe structural letter. Other than that, all of the addition, um, is in a compliant location. It complies with height, size, parking, all of that.
I'd move approval.
I second.
Hey, good. Uh, can we do a roll call vote? Does anyone have any further questions before we proceed?
Rock and roll.
Okay, can we do, did, nobody has any suggestions for changes to the resolution? Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Right, uh, Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
abstain.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
That is approved.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, the next thing, uh, uh, agenda. The special, the hearing, the public hearing has been postponed, but we want to open it because we'd like to, uh, get a peer review of the sound mitigating, um, structures that are proposed. So it is twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash sixty-nine S P. Now, excuse me, now I'm doing the next one. Um, it's twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine S P in Ro- in Rico, Art Constantine Esquire, two eighty-four New Canaan Avenue. And what we're, what we'd like to do here is authorize a peer review of the sound mitigation report.
Uh, I would, um, move approval of, um, the hiring of a consultant, uh, to do that. Uh, that is one of the major complaints of, uh, the neighbors. And I think, uh, the neighbors, uh, ourselves and frankly, even the, um, um, company here, um, would be best served, um, if, if we were to get, uh, an independent, uh, uh, sound review, uh, of their proposal. And there was, as I recall, very little detail regarding, uh, the mitigation efforts. I mean, they, they said what they were, uh, but, uh, I didn't see any detail to, uh, back that up in the information they provided us.
I will second that motion.
Hey, should we do a roll call vote here?
We can certainly. Um, Mr. Williams? I think that was a yes, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Mr. Bach. Oh, go ahead, Tammy.
Before we vote, um, who delayed the application and then will they come before us on the twenty-second?
Yeah, that, that's a good point. I probably should have chimed in a little bit. So the, uh, tech, we, we thought we were going to proceed tonight. The applicant sound engineer had a conflict and could not attend. Uh, so we felt that was going to be a big chunk of the questions were going to be related to their, their findings and their mitigation strategy. So we felt it was best to push it to the twenty-second, which is two weeks from tonight. Um, in the interim, we also thought it might be a good idea, which is why we're, you know, recommending you do proceed with the, uh, peer review of the sound report. We do have A K R F, who you recall from past applications, does a lot of track work, but they also have somebody that can assist with the sound engineering report. Have that analysis, um, and review done before your meeting on the twenty-second. And, you know, for, you know, I would say a relatively low cost, uh, for the applicant, not trying to spend a lot of money, you know, over, but just get, make sure the analysis that was initially proposed is correct. And then analyze the, you know, strategies they have for sound attenuation and make sure they're appropriate and make other suggestions as they see fit.
So the peer review will have an opinion by, hopefully not the evening of the twenty-second, but so that we would be able to review it before the meeting.
In a perfect world, yes, and I will stress that tomorrow morning when I speak with, uh, Marissa from A K R F.
Great, thanks, Steve.
Steve, can you remind us of where this property sits in terms of, um, zoning violations?
So there are, there, the violation, so the application in front of you, if approved, would cure the violations as they sit, provided that going forward, they, um, you know, sick, stick to the conditions of the approval, which I could never predict because if there's things related to hours of activity and sound, if they. which I could never predict because if there's things related to hours of activity and sound, if they, you know, decided they weren't going to meet those, then they would be back in violation, violation again. But where I think we're hoping this gets to is a point where there's the conditions from the prior approval, plus whatever new conditions are placed on, uh, a potential approval here, and then that would be their base going forward. If they violate any one of those provisions, that would be a violation of the approval, plus, you know, open them up to coming back to the commission for determination of compliance and/or to the enforcement citation process as well.
So it's been found that they've been in violation of the prior approval?
Correct.
And the proposed cure for that is for them to do something with us and giving them approval to do this other thing, but why would? Um, it's late, it's late, it's early, feels late. Um, like if, I don't understand, if we put conditions on the approval in the first place and they violated it, like, I don't understand how something would need to happen or we would need to approve something for them to come into compliance with the original condition. Like they were supposed to be able to comply with the original conditions at the time that the original conditions were placed. Does that make sense? Like, if, if the original condition said, don't, you know, do this after nine P M. And they've been doing it after nine P M. For them to say, well, in order to comply with that, we're going to need to do this, that and the other. And we need you to do a special approval so that we can do this, that and the other, and then we'll be in compliance with the original conditions. It doesn't make sense to me.
I understand. I don't want to, since the, you know, the applicant's not here, the public's not here for that. So I don't, I want to kind of can, contain the extent of the conversation around that, but to, to, to answer that specific question, the, the, the bulk of the, um, the remedy that they seek is modifications they made to the site that were beyond the bounds of the initial approval. So that, that, that can't be rectified unless you approve it. So if, you know, they expanded the yard in this direction and that direction, that's what they're kind of seeking from you, then you, you know, it's very well, fair game and appropriate to ask them about where they've erred in terms of the prior conditions. And, you know, if, if you're in the, the mindset of granting the modified special permit approval, will they adhere to their initial conditions going forward since they didn't do so in the first place? So I think that's a good question for them to address and speak to, and hopefully they do, and to, to your satisfaction.
Have there been fines assessed already for all of these violations?
No. Um, so when that was done, once they sought, um, you know, relief from the commission, you know, they started with the conservation commission, obviously, and that took a while. That typically puts kind of that on abeyance until that, this process is, you know, worked through.
Okay. Can we get a report from them at the next meeting on how the planting is going? Whether they've completed the planting?
Yes, I, I can, that, yeah, they should speak to that. I think it's done, but I'll let them confirm.
I, I went on a tour with Amelia this past Thursday, Galen, and the plantings were in the ground.
Oh, good.
They're living through the drought, who knows, but they were in the ground.
Okay. That's really key. That's an important aspect of this, I think.
Yeah, I would say if, if, since, you know, like I said, since the public's not here, the applicant's not here, probably good to confine conversation as tightly as possible if we can, and then, um, decide on, on the peer review tonight, and then on the twenty-second, you can, you know, fire away at them with all of your questions. But I will definitely reiterate to the applicant, your, your concerns about future compliance with the, you know, initial conditions. So that way that you can, they can be prepared to answer it and you can be prepared to, you know, take that into consideration.
Okay. Should we do then a roll call vote on the, uh, authorizing the peer review?
Better raise a hands, however you want to like to proceed.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Are there any abstentions?
Okay, so I, I said, I saw six zero one, I think.
Yes.
Do we also need to make a motion to continue this the next time?
Yeah, that, just to be safe, it's not a bad idea.
I will make such a motion to continue this to our October twenty-second meeting.
It's in seconds.
Sorry, Steve, just to, Darius, did you vote in favor or abstain? Or?
Uh, I voted in favor, I believe, Anna might have abstained.
Okay, cause I, I just want to make sure your vote was counted properly.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so let's raise our hand for who is in favor of postponing this uh, until the, uh, next meeting, the October twenty-second meeting. All those opposed?
Hmm.
Abstained? Oh, we are a consistent person there, abstaining to everything.
Happy to oblige.
Any, uh, uh, we will go on to the next matter then. Uh, which is twenty twenty-five dash sixty-nine S P, M P A S, moving C T L L C, two fifteen, Dr. Martin Luther King Drive, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Drive. It's a special permit application for commercial vehicle storage. Uh, so this is a public hearing. Who is here representing the, uh, applicant?
Good evening. It's Andy Sumalides from Land Tech.
Good evening, Martin Pollock from M P A S.
Okay, please proceed.
I'll just pull up the site plan quickly. So this is a one acre parcel in the light industrial zone. This property was approved, um, I don't know the exact timing, for a warehouse building on this property. Some site work started. Um, it, it received approvals from wetlands and zoning at the time. Um, on the right side here is all wetlands. They've actually filled a portion of the wetlands on the site at the time that was in the part of the approval. There is a very large retaining wall that surrounds the property. All that stuff was done as part of a future development that never happened. Um, the main reason it never happened and, and why we're in this predicament also is, um, it is a bear to get sewer and electric to this site, believe it or not. Um, on Martin Luther King at this location. Um, it's kind of sandwiched in between some developments further uh, east and west on Martin Luther King and, um, we've explored that tremendously to try and get sewer and electric here, because the thought here was two men in a truck would occupy this site for offices and, and some storage area for their commercial operations. Um, we went down a long path of exploring that and it's just not financially feasible to make that happen. Um, so what we're looking to do now is just turn this site into a, essentially a contractor vehicle storage area. Basically, very limited site work needs to happen to make that happen. Um, there, you know, it's already graded. There's already remnants of, you know, crushed stone asphalt, um, in the lot. What we're looking to do is what happened originally as part of the approval was stormwater was collected via these existing catch basins with an existing pipe that dumped right into the wetland. At the time that was acceptable and, um, wetlands was, you know, it, it got treated through the wetland system. As part of this upgrade to this parking lot, we will now take that same runoff, treat it through one of those downstream defenders, what are those hydrodynamic separators, those manholes with the spiral chambers that, that, that provides stormwater treatment and then discharge it via that same pipe into the wetlands. Um, obviously the Norwalk City Drainage Manual has been updated more recently. So these are the, the standards of D P W today in order to treat parking lot runoff. Um, there was a trailer here, um, at the time of the survey that has since been removed. But there was a temporary trailer there and two men in a truck was trying to operate out of here for a short period of time. Um, but that trailer has been removed. You have your normal streetscape, landscape requirements of street trees as part of this also. We went through wetlands and received the wetlands approval. Um, part of the wetland remediation was done with the prior application, but they kind of stopped work. Um, so we're kind of picking that back up. So we have to, um, mitigate the wetlands as part of this also. Um, and that was part of our approval with conservation. And essentially what you see here, there's an existing, if you guys driven by the site, I'm sure many of you have many a times. There's an existing chain link fence along the tire frontage. Um, what we propose is putting some privacy slats within that chain link fence to create some screening for these new vehicles with your, with some street trees that would sit right behind it, kind of like lollypopping on top of that fence and, and giving it some, some better streetscape. Uh, that is essentially our application. Um, it's pretty simple and straightforward. Uh, Martin, I don't know if you had anything else to add?
Yeah, just to give some context, our, our intention, we've been, uh, two men in a truck has been operating, M P S is the business name, but, but we, we operate as two men in a truck. Uh, we've been operating in twenty year, for twenty years in Norwalk for a long period of time. That was done, um, uh, in a different part of town. We wanted to make our home permanent here in Norwalk instead of being renters. We want to develop and, and provide a place for our employees to have a long-term home. That's when we acquired, uh, the property here. Uh, our intention was to build a facility there, uh, right away. Unfortunately, going through that process, as, uh, Mr. Sumalides described, the costs for doing that, um, were exceptionally high to give perspective. Uh, the contractor estimation was that to bring water, sewer and electric to the property, it'd cost about a million dollars before we ever broke ground on the property itself. Um, that is in large part due to, uh, requirements of having to underground electric. There's electric that, electrical overhead lines, um, all around the property. But those now have to be undergrounded under new standards. So all that cost is now going to make it preventative for us for the time being and for quite some time to be able to build the home that we really wanted to do and the, and anticipated on doing.
Oh, your operation is to store your trucks there and then the, the drivers come to, to the site, park their own vehicles, get other trucks and go do the moving that they are contracted to do for the day.
Yes, ma'am. We, that's correct. We had a, uh, as Mr. Sumalides described, we did have a, uh, office trailer that we were running off of generator power for two years, trying to go through this process. We, that was a stipulation for this was to have that removed. So we did that, uh, about a month ago, three weeks ago, uh, to try and conform to our application. We now have a separate office, uh, where we keep all of our equipment, tablets, paperwork, all that fun stuff. And, uh, my operations manager then travels from that now, uh, separate office to, uh, the property to help dispatch the movers and drivers. In the morning, they come back, uh, lock up the vehicles and redo it. We don't have the ability to park the vehicles at our new office space. Um, it's, you know, just an office suite within a, a larger office, uh, property. Um, but yes, we're intending to use this as our home to be able to park our vehicles.
Does anybody have any questions? No questions?
To add to that, we have gone to the, um, to the town of Norwalk, uh, the mayor, to the head of economic development, trying to request addition, uh, additional help in trying to get a building built, um, whether it's through any assistance that the town could, and we run into roadblocks on every single thing. Um, and so it's really pigeonholed us into a place where we can't sell the property because, uh, of the, we'd have to disclose the utility issues. So we can't sell it, but we can't build our building either because of the cost preventative side of it. So we're really stuck here. Um, trying to continue to provide a great place for our employees to come to work and it's making it very difficult and this will help move us forward. So we are compliant and we can at least then figure out what we're going to do for the long term.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is more a question for staff, but not, not something for now either. But I think it's a really interesting case study to look at of like what, what happened here. Cause I don't love hearing people trying to, you know, build in Norwalk and running into all these, all this red tape issue here. So I'm sure there's good reasons here, but maybe just be worth digging into as this, you know, on a later, at a later date.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll add a little bit more color. Maybe I'm talking too much, but the property directly adjacent to us that is also undeveloped, which is on the corner of Nap and Martin Luther King, did recently sell. It sat on the market for something like three or four years because other people saw the issues with, with trying to get something developed. The new owner of it did contact me and state that because he has a frontage on Nap Street, he can get electrical, he can get everything else run to his building with no problem. Whereas I have to underground everything directly adjacent and directly across the street from a massive U P S distribution facility. And so even though he's right there, even though you can see all the overhead lines, just the electrical undergrounding from contractors estimates that that portion of it will be a quarter million dollars. I'm a small moving company with a small handful of employees. I don't have a quarter million dollars just to run electrical before I ever break ground. And then you add six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, uh, sewer and another hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand for water. I'm really, you know, we're backed into a place here.
Mister Pollock, how long have you owned the property?
Uh, about two and a half years, I think, two years. We, uh, we, uh, I don't, yeah, about, about two years, just over two years. Sorry.
And it's your intent to keep the moving trucks at that property?
Yes, ma'am. They've been there since we purchased it.
Would you consider bringing other trucks into or just your moving trucks?
Uh, the long-term usage of it would be as a, as a contractor parking lot, uh, to be completely transparent. Uh, we, when we purchased the property, we, uh, purchased it with a, uh, construction loan from our bank, which stipulates that you have one year to break ground on the property. When we did not break ground within one year, uh, we essentially became in a term-based default on that loan. Uh, not on a financial default, but a term base because of the terms of the contract stipulate that you have to break ground within one year. So what that does is it automatically converted us from a twenty-year term, uh, to a ten-year term, which has very, become very financially difficult for us to handle. As you can imagine, uh, having to pay it off in half the amount of time. And so our long-term intent until we're able to figure out the utility aspect of it, everything else is to hopefully at some point lease out part of the property because we don't need it to another contractor that can park storage, uh, and store their vehicles as well. Um, just to be fully transparent, we, we've been, because of this utility situation, uh, we can't refinance our loan to make it a twenty-year loan and make the financial aspect of it make sense. On the flip side, I can't sell it because of the utility disclosures on it. And so either I, I, I got to figure out a way to get out of this financially and, and that's part of why we are here tonight, because I'm trying to do everything I can to be right by our city and by the community that we've served for twenty-plus years. But because of these ordinances and changes, I can't afford to break ground on utilities, but I can't afford to sell the property either.
So just one more question. Um, I have a concern about the, the resolution we have, uh, does mention storage of propane tanks. And that, even though it's a light industrial zone, there are many residences right on top of that, uh, high retaining wall right next to the site. Would it be?
Can I address that for you?
Yes.
The, 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 we have a forklift and the forklift is powered by propane. So we're not talking about large commercial storage of propane tanks. We're talking about what you'd go to the gas station and purchase that same size, and it's literally just to change out for our, uh, forklift. It's not some massive storage. It is simply what you'd go to, to replace your, your household grill propane tank with the same thing.
I understand, but if, if the approval were to, uh, accept, uh, the storage of propane tanks on the site, would that be an impediment to you?
I mean, I, I, again, just being fully transparent, we, we have that, that forklift and so we're not storing.
No, we're talking about propane storage tanks, the kind like Hocon brings to your house, the big ones.
No, 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 we would not be doing that. We would, now, the, um, uh, unless there's something else as part of what Andy has, has written out or Mr. Sumalides has. Um, no, I mean, it would, it was simply to store the smaller, and we're not talking about having twenty of them. We're talking about. The smaller and we're not talking about having twenty of them. We're talking about having one or two on property. So that when the the forklift runs out of fuel, you pull one off and replace it. That that's what we're talking about.
So this is the same kind of thing you'd have in your garage?
Right. No, that wasn't that wasn't my my question. It's it was, I think, when we get to the resolution, we'll see it. But no, I appreciate your answer and the forklift wasn't my concern. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, I mean, that that's the only thing that I I have my knowledge of of what would be stored as propane is is they. Are not the exact same shape because they are fit into a cradle on the forklift, but they are essentially the same size as a home grills uh propane.
Understood. Thank you.
One question. I'm sorry, Tammy, but just. Uh, do you know if the previous owners knew of the utility issues?
Uh, so when we purchased the property as we were going through the process. They did disclose, they said, well, we've got a we've got a quote from somebody to do the water. At a hun- uh at I think seventy or eighty thousand dollars, I think is what it was. I don't have it in front of me. I'm I'm at an airport. I'm on my layover. And so it was disclosed that it it was a a little bit longer run for the water, but nothing more. We were told that the utilities other than that were simple and ready to go. You're on Martin Luther King directly across what a two hundred thousand square foot UPS facility. You're on Main Road in Norwalk. We were told it's ready to go and. Our realtor um is been uh in the fire department for fifty plus years. He's been a realtor for. Fifty years, forty years in Norwalk and said he's never seen anything like this where the utilities are being. Am strong to be able to get there. So the answer is no. Aside from a quote on under the uh water itself. No, we had no, we had no disclosure of it. We contacted the closing attorney afterwards and said, hey, this wasn't disclosed. They said, you really, the only thing is title insurance and we contacted title insurance. A lawyer and they said, yeah, there's nothing you can do about it. You're stuck. You've closed on the property. It's yours.
Oh, sorry, Darius.
Yeah, I was just thinking about um suit to reverse the sale, but I guess you guys have already had a lot of conversations.
We've explored that and we've spent uh more money than I'd dare to admit on trying to figure out how to overcome this. And we've just really been back to in a very bad corner.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. Tammy?
Thank you. Um, hi, Mister Pollak. So in your application, it talked about putting lighting on the on the property. So. Obviously, if you're not able to get the electric there for what is considered a reasonable amount of money. Then that would be taken out of your application.
Um, so to address that, there is already lighting on property. There's a street light there. It is a low voltage light and so it does not cover carry enough uh current to be able to provide power to a building. Um, so that is already in existence. Uh, there is not any additional lighting that we would be adding at this time.
Okay, and is that okay with you or did you want the lighting?
Uh, for now, I mean, again, I I can't afford to uh put a quarter million dollars right now to underground electric and and do everything else. So for the time being. Uh, we would, the idea again here is hopefully we can work through this and get the approval and then start figuring out the utility aspect. Uh, with the city or anybody else to try and move this thing somewhat forward. And then we would amend this uh this uh application to then build our building. That's our hope. That's our long term goal is to. To be a permanent fixture of this community as we have been for twenty years. Um, so a lot of this was submitted for future future growth of that property if we can get this resolved.
And so for now, then you're really just going to pave part of the property?
I don't think we're even proposing to pave it because it's it's already just just crushed gravel and everything there. So it's just the 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 application itself is solely to be to remove the violations of. Parking our vehicles there now and getting the ability to have this zone as a contractor way down yard.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I just got notification that my flight is boarding, so I'll be walking while I'm talking. So excuse my bumping on my phone, but. I do need to start making my way to the gate. And wanted to make sure I could provide as much time and insight as I could during this process.
Yeah, thank you for the insight that you you've provided. Steve, I see you've got your hand up. Uh, is there something you wanted to address now?
Yeah, just really quick. Um, I think. And somebody will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, you know, our regulations would require utilities be buried on the site. Even that would be the case on the Nap Street property. So they would be pulling from the pole and then undergrounding. I don't think our regulations are the. Issue with the water or utilities getting from Nap Street up to the site. I don't I don't think that's the case.
No, we were told that it is the undergrounding process to get to the site that we cannot have overhead lines. So it's not just the undergrounding on the on the site itself. It is getting power run to it that overhead lines are no longer permitted. And that even though they are around, uh, if you stand on our site, you can stare overhead lines everywhere. On the frontage of MLK, they are not permitted. So to run from where uh where they are accessible, we would have to underground it the entire length of MLK. Um, to that point.
Do you recall which uh department in City Hall you had heard that from? Was that from planning and zoning?
Uh, I had a contractor, um. Uh, Gus, um, oh my gosh, I'm blanking right now. Gus Papa John. Uh, he went through the process for me, was meeting with all the different departments, so. He would have a better knowledge of that for me. He was working through it and working with the contractors. That do that type of work and they were informed absolutely that's the case. Uh, this was probably close to a year ago now where we were told all of this. Um, I went on to, like I said earlier, called the head of economic development for the.
Yes, we did. We did meet on site with. Papa John and Eversource and everybody and. Um, came up with what the plan needed to be in order to get electric service to the site and it's coming off the corner of Nap and Martin Luther King. We would put a transformer, we would, we would dig a conduit basically under the sidewalk of Martin Luther King all the way to our site. Site a transformer close to our site and then try and run primary from that transformer to service the new building.
This is a public hearing. Do we want to start the public hearing section of this? Uh, can we? This is a public hearing again, you everybody who. Speaks at the public hearing can only speak once. Uh, so say everything that you want to say, uh, in your one opportunity to speak and give us your name and address. Can you bring people over, Brian?
Sure. So if anyone would like to speak, please use the raise your hand tool to the bottom of your screen and you would click that once. If you're downloading on the phone, you'd hit star nine. Just one more time, if anyone would like to speak, use the raise your hand tool. At the bottom of your screen, you click that once and if you're on a phone, star nine. Seeing none, Miss Wells.
Thank you. Uh, we will then move on. Does anybody want to make a motion on this?
I I have just one question um to Mister Sumalides. Um, why can't you pull your power from Nap Street?
That is what that is the proposal coming off of Nap Street.
I mean Nap Street, uh, while completely avoiding Martin Luther King Drive.
So our our property doesn't front on Nap Street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. There's another property. I think that Mister. On that corner. That's the one that didn't sell for three, four years. And how did they get utilities? Well, they can. They could pull right off a nap. They're right there. Sewer is actually um not on that. It's actually on what's that road? Um. Sewer actually runs. On Eli. Eli Ave, yeah. That's where sewer is. So there's not even sewer down now. So, you know, there's options, you know, maybe in the future, one of those three single family homes that are behind us up on the wall, you know. Again, there could be some potentials in the future, but we don't own those properties. We could maybe, you know, it'd be cheaper to buy one of those houses. Put a sewer easement through it, rent that house out or do something of that nature in the future, but right now it's. It's a bear and then sewer is obviously a much higher than you'd have to pump. So there's some logistics even there. Um, of getting sewer to the property. And and just we we even did test holes to see if we can get a septic system on there. Um. And it's not feasible for septic. So we we've explored many, many options to try and get this thing going. Um, and here we are.
Promise we've tried to do everything I can within my financial means. Uh, but uh again, I I'm I'm. I'm not some Wall Street burrow. I own a small moving company. It it there's only so much I can afford to do, but we try to work it.
So for the time being, we just want to legalize the use of uh contractor storage because it's still of. A benefit to two men in a truck and then, you know, as Mister Pollak mentioned, we'll. We'll keep considering options. I mean, we even looked at solar for electric and and figuring out all kinds of options. So. Um, again, we're we're gonna. We're gonna keep exploring based on the predicament Mister Pollak's and to to try and get his, you know, operation fully there.
I motion to approve.
Okay, so you're making a motion.
Trailer.
Motioning to approve this application.
Okay, is there a second?
All second. This is Chapeau and appreciate the applicant's uh narrative on this, but.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, let's go to the uh resolution.
So one of the first ones that I think is worth discussing is the lighting. Um, so obviously they're pretty limited in terms of. Ability to get electrical there for any lighting. So I don't know.
Yeah, I'm curious. I I had a question for you and Steve on that about whether undergrounding utilities was required for. Any use of the site or it was just required for like development of a of a structure on the site? So I I wonder if it's possible to have a a meter run that then hooks up to. Like street street lamps is the wrong word, but uh lighting within the the parking area. Um, that would be conformant with our regulations, but I I don't know that offhand. Um, that's one thing that came to mind here.
Yeah, I I mean, I I think we can look at that and we could also say like, you know, we could put in here. Language that allows the applicant to work with staff to come up with a a solution for for any lighting issues um. That may come up. Um, so we can kind of try to see how creative we can get with getting them some some whatever lighting that they they might need.
Sure, I'm I'm comfortable with that change. I don't know if Anna is since she made the motion, but.
Sure.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else that they'd like to add to this?
I think it would be helpful if the staff could work with the applicant to come up with something. I mean, sure, Mister Sumalides has. Looked into all of these different. Options and stumbling blocks, but it would seem that otherwise his prop- the property is somewhat useless and. The applicant is paying property taxes to the city, so hopefully could get some benefit.
Yeah, I I mean, I I'm not suggesting, um, I looked at back at the regs in there, correct? Yeah, it it is required if you, but if you go. I just did like a street view and went up and down this that section of the street. This is like the one property that's. Like everybody else has access off a pole from a different spot. Uh, you know, hindsight, this would have been a technically would have been a good, it may be possible to ask for a variance of that section of the regulations. But just still something you could explore and then you could potentially put the poles in along the street.
We have asked for that variance and Eversource said that they would cover the cost to run those poles. If we got that approval, but when we approached um zoning or whatever the department was, they said, no, absolutely not. But was Eversource said that they could get power to that location at no cost. If we could get a variance for those overhead lines along Martin Luther King for that small section.
All right, well, we can, Brian and I can talk to the zoning enforcement officers, see if there's a. Yeah, I'm not sure if she's aware of it or not, or who spoke to who, but we can, we can explore that piece of it.
That would be greatly appreciated.
Diana, I uh heard you call out the propane before, but I I wasn't seeing that in here. Was there something in particular you were looking for? Uh, you're you're muted. We can't hear you. Diana, you're muted.
I'm sorry. It was in the staff memo under the uh definition of commercial vehicle storage yard. It was used for tradesmen and delivery trucks such as heating oil or propane. But excluding dump trucks and other construction vehicles. It's just that I don't want to see it become a storage yard for large propane carrying tanks. The the forklift is not the issue. Because it does, it is adjacent to residential properties. But it's not. Yeah. It's not in the resolution itself, so I don't know what that means. Steve, what does that mean?
So I guess the one way we addressed it is. Uh, item six, which is more specific to the type of trucks that will be stored on the property. Um, I guess one of the difficulties is is that the the application itself is to permit a commercial vehicle storage yard there, which. Those trucks, like a Hoyt heating oil or propane truck would comply with technically under the definition. Um.
Well, I don't want to make Mister Pollak's life any more difficult than it already is, but it it is a concern.
All right, let's see if we can.
Maybe no dump trucks or other or or fuel delivery trucks. I don't know.
Come up with some language.
Brian, is there anything in the definition that kind of deals with that already?
What it says, number six.
So the definition kind of allows it. So I guess we could, we could be more specific within the condition to say. That generally the uh that use could allow it, but this is in this particular application. That's not what's being applied for. And therefore exempt those trucks from from this.
Brian, can you tell us why the uh resolution would stipulate eight trucks and three snub nose trucks?
Uh, just based on their site plan.
Our hope is to be able to just park trucks as needed, but again, that was a site and that was that was done to get this moved forward. Um, we have various different trucks and and hoping just again to have that be a storage yard in general for parking, trucking, park, truck park.
We take that out?
Yeah, if that would, I mean, do we limit other sites for the particular number? That's a big lot to only be able to park eight. Trucks and three snub nose trucks.
Say it's all going to be used for storage of trucks.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Well, if he decide, I thought like the eight trucks and snubbed trust that that's the current business. But if he decides to lease out space for other commercial vehicle storage. You know, it may not be trucks that are parking there, right? Like. So. I mean, what what he's going to do complies with the definition of a commercial vehicle storage yard, right? I'm not sure why we would. I mean, he's not allowed, he's not allowed to store like um like double decker buses, but that's like in the definition. Sort of. I don't know about the double decker buses, but I'm not sure why we have to specify exactly what would be on the site. Period.
He already has quite a few trucks on the site and it doesn't appear to be a problem.
Right.
I don't see why we have to um limit that either.
Yeah, I drove by today and I think there are more than that in there and they seem to fit. Now. Yeah, I drove by today and I think there are more than that in there and they seem to fit. My head just, I'm looking at the Google Earth things. I honestly didn't count the trucks when I was there, but there are more than that.
Yeah, there are quite a few.
Just checking the definition of commercial vehicle to see if we could just use that term.
And I would understand like they have to comply with whatever parking rules, so it's not like.
Number six right now, I think is good.
That makes me agree. This. Yeah, I'd rather do that because then at least I have a defined term to go.
Think it's good.
Yep.
Yeah, that's good. That's plenty. Okay, anything else in here that anybody wants to change?
So I want to make sure that we we are compliant as well with everything. When we purchased the property, there were two shipping containers that conveyed with the property. Um, in this, in the zoning clause, would those be allowed to stay? We use those for just supply, storage and everything else. Um, as long as there was outside setbacks and everything else.
Um, so so. We we could look at it. One, I want to just check. In the regulations on what we have for like trailers, um. Uh, if it, if the commission is okay with it, if that's a minor change to the site plan at the end of the day, so if, you know, if. Uh, we approve this without really language specifying. Where those trailers or containers can be and then um. Staff finds a compliant location for either one, the location or two, the number. If all of a sudden they show up, that that's not violating their special permit.
Is that covered by number nine in this list about the changes going to you guys? It's like right now it says they're going to be removed, but if they want to keep them, does number nine. Cover that sufficiently, Brian?
I'd be, I'd be comfortable with that, yeah.
Sorry, Lou, I cut you off.
I I was just going to say we shouldn't be having this conversation with the applicant. We're not allowed to once we've um. Uh, once we're in this part of the uh process.
Yep.
Yeah, that's true. I think we're done with this though now, aren't we? Are we ready to take a vote?
I'm good with the the changes that we made. Uh, I know Anna motioned this. Are you good with the the changes?
Yep, as amended.
Okay.
And seconded as amended, yeah.
Okay, okay, good. So let's, let's take uh, let's take a vote now.
Hey, uh, Miss. Sure, Mr. Scholman.
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
All right, that's unanimous.
Thank you all. Thank you, Commissioner. Very much appreciate.
Safe travels.
Yeah, safe flight.
Thank you all.
Down to the wire.
An entire leg over, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to move on now to the the next thing on our agenda is the election of officers. But we the need to. Ostrate that for a session until the October twenty second. And we want to reconstitute the uh nominations committee. Uh, Lou and I would drop off the committee and we'd like to add Diana and Darius to the committee. Does, is everybody okay with that change?
So you're adding four people to the nominating committee?
No, we're adding two people, two people are going off and two people are replacing them. Lou and I are going off the committee and Diana and Darius are coming on the committee.
Thank you for the clarification.
So we're swapping swapping people. It'll still be a three person committee. So is everybody all right with that? How should we memorialize that?
Well, actually, the according to the bylaws. Um, it's the executive committee. That needs to accept. Uh, uh, your recommendation for the nominating committee, not the entire commission.
Ah.
So it's just your three officers.
Well, that's Chafin and me and who else? And I think Chafin and I are okay with it.
Yes, uh, that is a majority. Um, given that.
Are are Di- are Diana and Darius okay with it?
Happy to serve.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Bylaws, do we need to also vote to say that we're not holding that vote tonight? Because I thought of.
So you know, there's, there's, there's history here where sometimes. We uh officers haven't been elected until late November, so.
Okay.
We're still going to be doing it during the month of October.
Okay, cool. Great. I want to make sure we're good procedurally, so. Yeah.
Okay, so now we move on to the acceptance of minutes. And our next meeting, I I understand is in person. So we all have to make our way to City Hall. Um, acceptance of minutes of September third, twenty twenty five.
Move their approval.
Okay, is there a second?
All seconds.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I wasn't, I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, and and Nick abstains. Okay, now for September seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Does anybody move approval?
I'll move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, everybody who is. Who is in favor, raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Is it abstention? Wasn't there, okay. Good. And now to the comments of the director.
Um, yeah, you you, um, I'm sure you mentioned the next meeting will be hybrid, so you'll be in person, hopefully at City Hall at six o'clock. Up in council chambers, um, just a couple of quick updates on things. The field card scanning is done. We are now trying to figure out how to get public access to it because the the program we use, um. We can use it, but we can edit it as well. So we're trying and you need like a two part often authenticity check. So we're trying to figure out how not to do that for the public. So the public can go on and just view and and access the records and look at them. But then they obviously, we don't want everybody to have the ability to go in and change files and delete files on us, so we're. Working that through with the ID IT department, hopefully in the next couple of weeks that will be done. Um, that. Building permits from nineteen twenty nine, I think, through sixty one are scanned. Those aren't going to be up for a little while because they're still kind of doing QA, but they're grabbing the next batch now of like a hundred boxes of permits, so they'll be. Working away diligently on those. I'm trying to think what else. We do have a preferred vendor for the uh permit software. I'm not going to announce who that is because we're still kind of in the. Final phase of that where we're just dotting our i's and checking our t's and making sure all the pricing is. Correct and that before we go to contract, we have everything lined up the way we want, but that's moving along pretty well. So those are two kind of. Neat activities that kind of dovetail pretty well with each other, so that's kind of where things sit.
Thank you. Any comments from the commissioners? No comments. Okay, then the next thing is adjournment. Does anyone have a motion, want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
On October twenty second.
See you then. Good night, everyone.